The first order of business is our invocation, and we have the Reverend Eugene Austin Senior, pastor of the Morning Star Baptist Church here. Welcome Pastor, we appreciate you being here. Everybody will please stand, and after the invocation, everybody remain standing and join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pastor?
Let us pray. Eternal most gracious and sovereign God, we humbly offer thanks and appreciation for all that you have done, are doing, and will perform within and throughout the city of Virginia Beach. Thank you, Lord, for the sacrifice and dedication, Mayor Cecil's and the City Council, other city officials, civic, religious, public, and educational leaders who work diligently at protecting, equipping, and unifying the citizens of this city. We pause as well in observant for those officers and service members who have given their lives protecting our freedom, both within Virginia Beach, forward deployed in harm's way, and the families they left behind. We now invoke your presence and guidance to this formal session, that all efforts, requests, petitions, discussions, and decisions be approached with all humility of heart, with an inclusive focus of all citizens, from the innermost parts of the city to the outermost parts of Virginia Beach. We thank you for your divine wisdom in setting this agenda, acquisitioning and allocation of all funds, with all intentions and initiatives towards building one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag. United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor, we appreciate you for coming. Adam Clerk, do you have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. The first order of business is the certification of the closed session. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, votes open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to read, so I'm not sure why that board didn't come on.
That's okay, we'll move on.
I have the printout.
Okay, the next order of business is the approval of the informal and formal session minutes for May 5th, 2015, and May 12th, 2015. May I have a motion?
May you approve.
Motion's made and seconded. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, votes open.
It's showing everyone has voted, I don't know if electricity's going out today. I have a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Right. You can just tell us how the vote goes when we vote.
It came up.
Oh, it did? Okay. Thank you.
All right, declare a public hearing on leases of city-owned property, Old Beach Open Air Markets, a 620-19th Street Farmers Market. Any speakers?
No, sir.
620-19th Street Art, any speakers?
No, sir.
620-19th Street Green?
No, sir.
All right. Close the public hearing on that, and open the public hearing on franchise Lumis Networks Inc. Telecommunications. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
All right. Close that public hearing. We'll now go to the consent agenda, and I'll ask Mrs. Henley to do the consent agenda for us, if she will.
Okay, on the consent agenda will be ordinances, number one, ordinances to amend and renew franchise agreements for, A, the Old Beach Open Air Markets in the Public Right of Way at 619th Street, for Farmers Green and Art, and B, Lumis Networks Inc., Ray Telecommunication Service in Public Rights of Way. Second ordinance, ordinance to grant Ebenezer Baptist Church an extension for satisfying the conditions of a street closure granted May 27th, 2014, encompassing Norwich Avenue, Wesleyan Drive, and Burma Road. Under planning, number one, HomeFed Asheville.
I have to declare a public hearing on.
You're slow. Our public hearing. We will get through this.
Mrs. Henley, you must learn to express yourself.
Now you can go.
Now I can go. We're muddling through, right? One, HomeFed Asheville Park LLC for a modification of proffers of conditional zoning of a single-family residential development plan at Asheville Park Boulevard, which was deferred April 21st. This will be for another indefinite deferral. Item two, Cardinal Sign Corporation and GEO Development Corporation for special exception for alternative compliance to Code Section 2210A6 of the city zoning ordinance, Ray a freestanding sign at 233 Independence Boulevard in the CBDA Core District, and that is for approval. Three, also for approval, CNC Development Company, Inc.
No, we're, you're right, I'm sorry.
Okay. For non-conforming use regarding two new single-family homes at 2024 80th Street in the Lynn Haven District, also for approval. Item five, approval for trustees of First Presbyterian Church for a conditional use permit, Ray the religious use in childcare at 303 36th Street in the Beach District. Six, for approval, Waves Motel for a special exception for alternative compliance to the Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code regarding a mixed-use structure at 1304 and 1312 Atlantic Avenue. Item seven, these will be changes in zoning for O2 Office Historic Kempsville Overlay District to B4K Historic Kempsville Area Mixed Use District. B R10 Residential District in the Historic Kempsville to B4K Historic Kempsville Area Mixed Use District. And C, B2 Business District to B4K Historic Kempsville Area in the Mixed Use District. And those will be for approval. And then amendments to the zoning ordinance, A, sections, Code Sections 901 and 2203 and 5-2 of the Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code to establish wine tasting rooms as the principal use in the B1A Limited Business District, B2 Community Business District, B3 Central Business District, B4C Central Business Mixed Use District, and CBC Central Business Core District, and ORD Oceanfront Resort District, and add the new Code Section 209.3 regarding requirements. B, Code Section 105 regarding nonconformities. And city zoning ordinances, this would be C, Code Section 111 to define live-work unit and add Section 209.3 to allow live-work units in certain zoning districts and setting forth performance and development standards, and let the record show that Councilman Moss is voting no. Also for D, approval to amend the city zoning ordinance, Section 5.2 and 6.2.2 of the Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code to allow live-work units in certain building types and establishing parking requirements. Also for this, let the record show that Councilman Moss voted no. And then item E, Code Section 211 regarding allowed signage for parks and recreation centers, those for approval, and I recommend move for approval of these items.
Is there a second? All right, Mr. Moss, I believe you were voting no on item seven, is that correct?
Correct, A, B, and C, and at the end I'd like to explain my vote.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
All right. We have a motion and a second. The vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the consent agenda with the may votes as stated.
Mr. Moss, did you?
Yes, I voted no on the historical district, because when that first came to us, the majority of the citizens that came out and spoke that night, I voted no, and this is just a further fruit of that, what I thought was poor decision at the time, so I'm being consistent in voting no on the further changes. And with regards to the live-in units, when this was first brought to our attention, I said, "We need to have less than this piecemeal response, we need to be looking at this comprehensively across the city." So my vote isn't necessarily prejudicial to this particular instance, as it is in opposition to just our failure to deal and treat everyone the same at the same time, and I think this piecemeal way of looking at things in the city is a wrong approach.
All right. We'll now go to item J4, which is the application of CP Marine and Diesel Services, Inc., and SpinCo LP for conditional use permit, Ray vehicle repair at 1399 Air Rail Avenue in the Bayside District. Is the applicant here? Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Do you, are you speaking for yourself, or?
I was only here because I heard that there was an objection, and I was here to answer questions.
All right, is there anybody here in opposition? All right, you have somebody in opposition, do you want to make a presentation, or do you want to hear what she has to say and then respond?
I'll wait to see what she has to say.
All right. Ma'am, would you like to come forward?
Emily Palmer, 1401 Air Rail Avenue.
I am, I'm right next door to this building, and we're a small company, family company, we've been there, we own the building for 30 years, so my son and his wife are now also in the business, and my husband retired. So when I saw the notice that this was going to come through in April, I came down and I spoke to Graham Owen about it, and I expressed my concern, because whenever you see a mechanic place, whether it's diesel mechanic, marine mechanic, they start off, you know, neat and tidy, and over the course of the life of the business, it gets crowded with a lot of vehicles and equipment, and it gets unsightly and messy and unattractive. This property is located right at the mouth of Thurston and Air Rail, where all the traffic comes in for the water department, for UPS, there's a lot of businesses on that road. And my concern is, I have several concerns that I expressed to Mr. Owen, and he said at that time that he would write some conditions for the April 8th meeting, and then when we came to this meeting, then I asked him to send me a copy, so I have a copy of his recommendations. So my concerns were, first of all, were the parking situation, because if it's a business that's doing really well, it's going to have a lot of trucks, you know, they do a lot of truck business, like I think they do FedEx trucks, things like that. And we share a driveway, one of the driveways we share, where they have about eight feet on one side of the building, and I have the other. Our building is 22 feet from their building. So my concern was about the parking, so Mr. Owen said that they were going to get five parking spaces on the other side of the building, and they weren't going to be allowed to park in the front, so people coming into the park didn't have to see any of that truck stuff, I don't know what you call it, but all that equipment, and it would still look nice, and they were going to put some shrubbery and things. So that was one of my concerns, where if they're doing a really good business, where are they going to put all these trucks? Where are they going to be? Because there is parking on the road, but that's going to be very difficult at the mouth of Thurston and Air Rail, because those 18-wheelers that come in, and they got to go around that curb to go right, even though you see those two cars there now, it's going to be a situation, it's going to be hard. My building is on the right, that long building, on the right of that space. So that's a consideration, blocking access to my driveway is a consideration. The noise is also a consideration. If we're only 22 feet apart, now, at the, at the April 8th meeting, they mentioned that one of the dock doors on my side is sheet rocked over, so there's no access to that one, but there's still a dock door, and I have no idea if they're going to use it or not, but in order to get into that dock door, they only have like eight feet of property, they have to come into my space to get in, if they ever use it, which I don't know if they are or not. So I have a noise issue, and I had looked up the ordinances going back to when the park was open, and there's a whole paragraph on noise and other things that could affect small businesses being right next door, and they use those, I don't know the right words when I spoke to you today, those machines.
Air drills.
Yeah.
Dramatic drills.
Right, I'm not mechanical at all, so I'm just concerned about the unsightliness, the parking, the blocking, where the vehicles are going to go, the noise, the duration of time, the vehicles are going to be there. Now, if everything is on the other side of the building, then the tenant on the other side has to deal with unsightliness, and my side and Thurston's side coming in would look attractive, would be fine. So since none of that was spelled out on the conditions, and can I just read that one paragraph for you, so you know what it says? It says, "The parking area shall be restripped in accordance with public works standards and specification. Vehicles outside the building shall only be parked in striped portions of the parking lot." It doesn't say where the striped portions of the parking lot are. They could be on the front, they could be on the side, it doesn't say specifically where they're going to be, and if we could change that to be more specific, I think it would help everyone.
All right. The, can you show us, who owns, while I have you, who owns the brick office building that's on the other side of this gentleman's property?
I think Belanga still owns it, he owned.
Who?
His name was Mr. Belanga.
Not the applicant, though?
No, no.
So.
This, this piece of parcel was owned by one person. We bought the building, I think, in like 1983, '04, something like that. So even though there's only a couple feet here, the city still divided this, and I purchased this property, which we share, this driveway, and the city has their water.
It's a pump station.
Pump station, that's the right word. Okay. Then, this is another building, and they're, they have parking on this side and facing here, and I don't really know who's there, because a lot of times it's empty, and then a lot of times there are cars there, so, and we try to stay to where we are. But this is the parking place here, where Mr. Owen said that they were going to park their vehicles, and that would be fine, but it doesn't really specify that in the conditions.
All right.
It just says parking.
Ms. Kane.
What type of business do you have? What is your business?
Sales, we're on the telephone with our customers, and, you know, so it's like noise-sensitive. If there was a lot going on, like when they pump out the pumping station, which they do periodically, then that noise, you know, we have to stop, we can't talk to our customers while they do that, because it makes a lot of roar. So that's why I'm concerned, since we're only 22 feet apart, how the noise is going to affect us.
All right. Finished?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very much.
Mr., is it?
Moomie. Yes, would you come forward, please? Thank you for considering this matter. In this case, the Gloria and Carl Pitt have been two blocks down the street for 21 years, they've operated the same, they will be doing the same thing at 1399 as they're doing at 5900 Thurston. They have, they do state inspections, they do vehicle repair, they have about 3,000 feet there, there are seven tenants in a 21,000 square foot building there, they've been there 21 years, the landlord has renewed their lease for years. If there was any problem there, I'm assuming he would never have done that. They've been renting that for 21 years, they now have the opportunity to buy a property, and they're getting about almost, almost twice the square footage. On that plan, as you'll see, that plan was drawn like that, and the properties are sold separately, and, you know, when they purchased those, the buildings were still 22 feet apart, and they bought it knowing it's an industrial area, and they're probably going to get some noise from time to time. But the, the Pitts have been good neighbors down the street for, for 21 years, and, you know, we assume they're going to continue to be good neighbors. There's parking, there's about five or six parking places to the left of the building, and then there's three in front of the building, there's striped parking places, and then there are two that are against the curbs that are about, there's 10 or 11 striped parking places on that left side. Also, there's some very complex legal agreements in this driveway. They've got, they've got title insurance agreements that they've got to leave them open, I mean, there's very strict agreements when they sold these properties, that they each had to be careful to leave them open and everything else, and that's all part of the title work that they all did at the time they purchased the property. So we think they'll be good neighbors, they've already had the building already painted, which the city wanted them to paint it, so it would appear, have a better appearance. They're ready to purchase, everything has been approved on it, the only thing, there are two small underground oil tanks behind this building, they're going to be removed on Thursday by Bay Environmental, so hopefully that'll all be clean and everything there, and we've been working on it for five or six months to get financing and everything else approved.
Let me ask you a question, are they going to move their entire business to this site?
Yeah, they're in about 3,000 feet where they are, they're only in one space, there's seven spaces in a 21,000 square foot building, they're in 3,000.
But they, I went by there, and they've got all these big trucks parked all over the place out there.
Well, as you probably noticed, there's about 40 feet from the back of the building to the edge of the curb, so they've got seven different tenants that are in that building, and they all bring their vehicles and everything else in there, but there's seven businesses in that one. In this case, there's going to be one business occupying it, they do truck, they do state inspections, they do mainly vehicle, vehicle repair and pickup repair.
Well, based on the size of the trucks that I saw there, I don't think they could get over two or three trucks on, on this site.
Yeah, I've not, I've not seen a truck with a tractor, they, my understanding is that they mainly do state inspections on the tractor part, they're in 18, 18 feet long, I think, the tractor portion of, and I think that's, that's their major state inspection work.
The, the parking on the left, facing the building, the parking on the left-hand side of the building, who owns that parking?
Yeah, there isn't, there isn't any, and I don't know who the owner is, but they're, they're in one of these 3,000-foot spaces back here, they have three or four single-vehicle parking places there, and then. But I, I haven't seen them bring semis back there myself.
I don't think they can get a semi, but.
Well, yeah, that's what I was thinking, but they do, they do work on the truck, the tractor part of it, the front part of it, is where their major work is. And, and autos and trucks, small autos and trucks.
Yeah. Mr. White, what do you know about this agreement to put conditions on the parking and so forth?
The, the condition, the condition that is in your report is.
See what you have.
It is a typical condition. It's not specific, though, as to where that parking will be located. Looking at it, I don't think the parking could be located anywhere other than on the, I think it's the south side, southwest side of the property, opposite of the one, the lady who was speaking of, her side. So we can make the condition such that the parking will be really where it is now. It's just not striped unless they've gone out there and striped it recently.
All right. I, I'm really apprehensive about this application because of the size of the property and what I saw when I went out there, and what I saw where they are currently working, operating from, and the type of equipment that they're working on. I'd really like to have something nailed down as to where their parking is going to be. And I think the lady does have a legitimate concern, and I think it would be better if we defer this, I guess indefinitely until we can get, get it nailed down what the parking plan would be, because I, I don't know, they're going to operate with, with the type of equipment they work on, on this particular site with that building the way it is and so forth. It seems to me like it's a very, very crowded piece of property, and.
It, it is with seven, it is with seven companies in that one building. I mean, obviously, there is parking problems over.
Even with two or three trucks.
Yeah.
That they would be working on, it's going to be crowded. So I, you know, I want to see who owns that parking on the left-hand side and how deep it is.
Yeah, the same, the same owner owns both of these properties. His name's Johnny Spencer, and Spencoe is the name of it. But he, I don't represent him, but he, he owns, he owns all, this whole property, and the property line's right here. So he owns from here over and would retain that. He's selling the 50, 300 square foot building over to this line.
Okay, I understand. That, that's good to know. But the real, my concern is that maybe he owns it, but if he doesn't, if there's not some kind of agreement, a written agreement between him and the new owner of this property as to allowing those trucks to be put on, in that parking space, between the two buildings, those two buildings, this lady's going to be, really have a problem, because there's just not enough space to handle the type of equipment that they're working on out there.
The only truck I've ever seen in, in this facility is the cab, the cab part of the truck. I've never seen it.
Well, I, I went out there and I saw what they had today.
Right, right.
And the trucks are big. I mean, they're not, you know, automobile, small automobiles, or, or SUVs, or anything like that. They're big trucks.
Right.
So we've got to, he, something's going to have to be worked out with the property owner on the left there, given parking space for this, for this thing to have, to work, because it's just not going to function properly. Otherwise, this lady's going to have big trucks sitting in her driveway, blocking her access to her property, is what's going to happen.
For the title work, they don't have the right to do that. They, they actually both have easements to protect themselves.
I understand that, but what, what's going to happen is somebody's going to pull a truck up there and, and lock the door on it, and then she's going to have a problem getting in and out of her property. And that's what's going to happen, so. And I don't think we ought to set that up, that's all. Yes, Ms. Wilson?
Can I ask a question about the bays that are on the right side? Are they going to be sealed off?
Well, they, they are right now. They're, it's around the other side, yeah. There's two doors there, one operable, the other one has been drywalled over.
And is that on the?
That, the one on the left.
Is that on her side, or is that on the opposite side?
That's her, she's, she's 20 feet over from that building over to her building.
Okay.
Yeah, that's her building, too.
Okay, so one of those doors could be opened, and they could be.
Yeah, the one in the back.
Using those air drills and making a lot of noise and come through that door. So, I mean, do they need that door? Because the trucks aren't going to be able to pull up into there.
Yeah, they're actually putting an additional door in front for access to the, the building, on the front of the, the white part of the front building.
But they.
Those, this one is not usable.
They closed off one, yeah, they closed off one, so why don't they close off the second one?
Well, it, that's, they're just buying it in the condition that it, that it's in, and they haven't made plans yet on what, on what to use, and what to leave.
My concern about that is, if they were to open those doors, or try to use one of those doors, bringing the size of equipment, trucks in, up that, that very narrow.
Yeah, it's not possible.
You can't turn into those doors with those trucks.
Right, right.
So.
Another problem.
It's, and half of that space belongs to this lady. So it's, it's just a severe inconvenience to her property, and having been out there on the property, I don't know where they're going to put these trucks, unless, because particularly if those office spaces on the left-hand side are rented, then the people who are renting those office spaces are going to want that parking for their, for their use.
They have parking, see where that red line is?
Yeah.
That's their parking between that and the building.
But it's not sufficient, is what I'm saying to you. Well, I, I would appreciate a, a motion to defer this indefinitely until we can figure out, get with the applicant and figure out how, how this parking is going to take place.
Mr. Weissman, I will move that we defer this indefinitely.
I'll second that. Go ahead, Barbara.
All right. Any discussion?
I'll just.
Yes.
Picking up on your remarks, Weissman, I just went on and checked, because it's great about the internet, you can check about dimensions of tractor trailer trucks and the length of the cabs. So I think it would be important that, when you do provide that back, to go back and provide the council the reference, because they go from 10 feet in width to 12 feet in width. And so you need to look at the length, because when you're looking at, just like you watch on CNN News, they show those post accidents things, to see a physical representation on the drawing of the dimension of the truck, so you could really analyze those turning radiuses to see that really the egress and ingress is really executable, given the dimensions, would be important to just drawing some lines on it and say these are parking spaces, but to actually show how that could be executed would be important.
Yeah. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, the vote's open.
By a vote of 10 to 0, the application of CP Marine and Diesel has been deferred indefinitely.
Sir, you need to get with the planning staff and see what you can, information you can give them, them to try to work something out, because otherwise, this doesn't look too good, to tell you the truth.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next order of business is appointments. Mrs. Henley?
Okay. For the Arts and Humanities Commission, for a four-year term, I move to reappoint Chaney Cole and Rose P. Daria. For the Audit Committee, which has a three-year term, to reappoint Joanne Ogon. For the Bayfront Advisory Commission, which has a three-year term, to reappoint Charles Fason Jr., Charles Malbon Jr., Stacy Patrick, and Martin Thomas. And to reappoint as ex-officio members Ross Brockwell and Robert Bob Thornton. For the Bikes and Trails Advisory Committee, which has a three-year term, to reappoint William E. Hart Jr., Angela Hathaway, Stephen Romine, and Kimberly Shuler. For the Board of Building Code Appeals, which has a two-year term, to appoint Armon Wright. For the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, which has a two-year term, to reappoint Robert M. Dyer, Barbara M. Henley, and James K. Spoor. For the Human Rights Commission, which has a three-year term, to appoint Michael Berlucci. For the Minority Business Council, which has a two-year term, to reappoint Kelvin Arthur, Harshad Barot, Sheila Johnson, Michael Lancaster, Gusto Maglegmat, Delcino Miles, and Ferdinand Perez. For the Wetlands Board, for the unexpired term of Jeffrey Marks, to appoint Tom Vale. And for the unexpired term of Tom Vale, who is serving as an alternate, to appoint Jeffrey Marks for that unexpired term. I move approval of these appointments.
Are there any further nominations? Yes.
Did I miss it? Did we miss the one from the right?
It's on there.
We did that one.
Yeah.
It's on there.
Yeah. Okay. Any further nominations?
Best to ask, be safe. So good for you.
If not, the vote's open.
When in doubt, ask.
By a vote of 10 to 0, the appointment as stated, approved.
Thank you. Is there any further business to come forth, counsel? If not, meeting adjourned.